I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for May 7, 2013. I would invite Rodney Goodman from the Habitat for Humanity chapter here in Bowling Green, the executive director, who's going to provide our invocation tonight. Thank you for coming.
Thanks. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for what you allow us to do, and we thank you for the good work that good people can do when they come together to build a better community. And we thank you for the good folks of this community, and pray that you would help us to work together to not only move our city forward, but to show the compassion and love of Christ to this community. And we pray these things in His name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. If you'll join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Denny?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Waltrip?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here.
Do we have any awards or recognitions tonight?
I do not, Mayor.
Anyone on the commission? City manager comments?
I have no comments, other than there will be a need for an executive session. Ms. Schaller will read the reasons.
Pursuant to KRS 61-810C for discussions of proposed or pending litigation against your own behalf of the city, and KRS 61-810F, discussions or hearings which might lead to the appointment, discipline, or dismissal of an individual employee without restricting that employee's right to a public hearing if requested. This exception shall not be interpreted to permit discussions of general personnel matters in secret.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. I have the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting on April 16, and a special meeting on April 30 of 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Denny. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. This is a point in the meeting when we allow the public to come and make comments. If they have an item that is not on the agenda they'd like to bring to our attention, they're welcome to step forward at this time. Seeing no one, there is one item that I've been asked to bring to the public's attention. We have a program on our Channel 4 station called Mythbusters, and this is one of those opportunities for us to help explain a little bit about city government. And because of the controversy going on in the Bowling Green Independent School System and Warren County Public Schools, we feel obligated to provide just a bit of information to make sure that people are fully informed and are able to make their comments and views known to those who can help them with that decision. But both the Warren County Public Schools and the Bowling Green Independent School System are independent political entities. They have separate elected officials called school board members, and they're also a separate taxing structure. There is no connection between the city of Bowling Green and the Bowling Green Independent School System, nor any connection between Warren County Government and the Warren County Public Schools. Neither Bowling Green nor Warren County can redraw the school district lines. Only the systems can do that, or state government under their direction. The current district lines were set in 1958 and have no relationship to the Bowling Green city limits. You can live inside the city of Bowling Green and be in the Warren County Public School District. Many realtors use the term annexed areas, and that is a term that they use to identify living within the city limits but being in the Warren County Public School District. The only connection between the city of Bowling Green and the Bowling Green Independent School System is that they hire us to send out their tax bills for them, and it shows up on your Bowling Green -- your city of Bowling Green tax bill. The city of Bowling Green has 20.6 cents per hundred value. The Bowling Green Independent School System is 73.1 cents per hundred value. So we just want to make that clear, and if there are comments that you have about the school districts and their relationship, we would encourage you to contact your school district board member. Any other comments? Okay. First item for consideration is the second reading of Ordinance 2013, number eight.
Ordinance Rezoning Real Estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 1.79 acres from LI Light Industrial and HI Heavy Industrial to CB Central Business located at 425 First Avenue and 101, 115, 119, 125 State Street, presently owned by Phoenix Enterprises LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of Ordinance BG 2013, number nine.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 56.96 acres from AG Agriculture to HI Heavy Industrial located at 164 Fred Madison Road and 1777 Glasgow Road, presently owned by the Intermodal Transportation Authority Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Third. Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2013, number 62.
Municipal Order Authorizing and Accepting Bid Number 2013-35 for Fiscal Year 2013 Street Overlay from Scotty's Contracting &amp; Stone LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the total amount of $825,237.28.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill. Mr. DeFabo.
One of our top priorities as a city is to pave roads within our community. This year, we're asking the commission to spend $825,000 to repave 24 segments, or roughly 4.04 miles in the city. We sunshine to you the list of priorities before they've been, again, placed in your packet. There's also some ancillary materials in case we -- a supplemental list in case we happen to have more money and able to do more. Jeff Lashley is here. We went out to bid, and we had one bidder, and that bidder is Scotty's Contracting &amp; Stone.
Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Help me out here. I'm looking over the sheet.
Okay.
You just passed out to us, and...
That's correct.
I think that we, as a commission, had said something in the past about Chestnut Street, especially in the vicinity of 11th and Chestnut there by the old...
Yes, sir. That's in the base contract, so it is part of this contract. The list that passed out earlier is in the event. We're a little bit under budget, but those are some of the high priority streets from a condition standpoint. We have mud pumping through several of them, so if there's money left, we would like to start attacking that list. Chestnut Street is listed, and we are doing that block from 10th to 11th, the location that you were talking about. It's on the memo.
One other thing we had talked about in the past, well, I see it as opened up. I had overlooked. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? This funding comes from liquid fuel taxes.
Liquid fuel taxes, and some carryover from the past. Liquid fuels, yes.
All right. Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2013-63.
Municipal Order Authorizing and Accepting Negotiations After Sealed Bidding for Bid Number 2013-29 for Lever's Lane Soccer Complex Restroom Construction from Scott Murphy &amp; Daniel LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount of $108,814.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Denny and second by Waltrip. Mr. DeFabo.
One of our longstanding priorities is to build another restroom at the soccer complex since it's heavily used. We went out to bid. We had three bidders. We had six bidders. Three were responsible, so we had three final bidders. The only problem was they were all over the amount that we had budgeted, so we used, under our bidding process, negotiation after sealed bidding, and reduced the scope of work, dividing it between what we will do and what the contractor will do. As a result of that effort, we're now under budget, and the low bidder in this particular case is Scott Murphy &amp; Daniel, at $108,814.
Brent is here. If you have any questions about the project and its history. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2013-64.
Municipal Order Approving the Year 10 Annual Action Plan of the Consolidated Plan for Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Funding and Authorizing Its Submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Waltrip. Mr. DeFabo.
Every year, as an entitlement community, we receive monies directly from HUD to affect community development purposes in our community. This is the 10th year as an entitlement community. We use a deliberative process involving staff, a committee appointed by the commission. We have a public hearing. We sunshine the results to you, and we're here tonight to ask you to ratify and approve the projects for funding. Brent is here. If you have any questions about the particular projects, we would like no review of those, but they're listed in your package. The total amount is -- we'll use $471,000 in this year's CDBG money, as well as reallocated past year's funds. It might be helpful if Brent would, again, come up and remind us all of what we'll be doing this coming year.
Mr. Childers, you've been summoned.
Not that I'd say you're going to do this, but...
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Well, you have a time, and you have to come up and talk.
Yeah, you've got to take advantage of it, right? We're going to continue our partnership with the Human Rights Commission for our Fair Housing Outreach and Marketing Program. That's mainly advertised to landlords, property managers, and also residents. Continue our small business program with the Housing Authority and their partnership with the Small Business Development Center at Western Kentucky University. Continue our assistance program with the Bowling Green Warren County Welfare Center. That helps with rent and utility assistance, one-time rent and utility assistance, up to $150. Assist the Family Enrichment Center with purchasing a building so that they can consolidate their offices and their daycare facilities. Continue our partnership with WKU Research Foundation for the provision of GED and ESL classes, primarily marketed to Hispanic-speaking individuals. And also, Mr. DeFabo talked about the reallocations, our partnership with Habitat for Humanity. Rodney gave our invocation this evening, for the Durbin Estates Infrastructure Project. That was funded last year, but due to some regulatory issues, we terminated that funding, and then he reapplied this year and was awarded that funding again. Also, Community Action. You got a question?
You're getting to Community Action.
Okay. Community Action was awarded two projects. One was for childcare services, and then the other one was for the Go BG Bus shelters. And at the public hearing, Ken talked about what those shelters would look like and where they're going to be placed.
With the childcare, was there a difference in how they could spend their money this time?
The difference was now it would be actually a voucher program, and that was making it, tying it back to the actual family itself. Before, we were allowing them to use it under kind of an administrative, just draw it down on a monthly basis, and now I'm requiring them, and through the committee's recommendation, of actually tying it to a family. So the family will apply for the voucher, receive the voucher, and then we will pay for that voucher, but the voucher could only be used at Community Action. So the money still flows to them, it's just we can tie it back to an individual family member. So now we'll know Ms. Smith at 11212 Street received this, and she is blah, 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 blah. So it gives us better data information to report back to HUD so that we know where our funding is being used and who's benefiting from our funding.
Does that in any way harm the organization? Does that cut down on the funding that they have to actually administer the programs?
It's an increase in overall funding. Last year, they received $18,000. This year, it's $30,000. Now, what the change is, is how it is used. They're still going to get $30,000. Before, we just used -- they used it as just a straight supplemental, so it was just kind of put on top, and then they took it off on a percentage basis, month to month. Now, it will actually be tied to a family member, or tied to a family, I apologize. So it's offsetting a cost to the family, so the person that's benefiting is the person who receives the voucher. You understand? So it does change some of the relationship there, but that's why it was also increased this year, was to allow for that.
Could I ask Cheryl to...
Sure.
Cheryl, would you mind? I'm putting you on the spot. We haven't talked about that, other than I think that we all received a letter from Cheryl, information from Cheryl.
This is Cheryl Allen from Community Action.
Yes, Brent is correct in that the CDBG allocation, Cheryl Allen, Community Action, in the allocation for CDBG this year will be an increase for childcare through CDBG, and that the money is to be used specifically for families who meet income qualifications versus before the money had gone to support childcare operations. So for many years, probably since the '70s or thereabouts, the city had supported the childcare operations. And then, when the city decided a couple of years ago not to fund childcare out of the general fund, the decision was made to move our support from the general fund to the CDBG dollars. And so, the first year, we had a pretty good amount, and then last year, it was cut to 18,000, and now this year, we have no support funds. So as I said in my letter, we will be reducing our childcare slots for infants and toddlers. But it will be supporting families, individual families, and that is important as well for families who struggle with beating childcare and with the state's cuts to the subsidy pool.
I'll have to admit, not being fully -- I don't understand, how is it a cut if you're getting more money?
How's it cut? What?
You got 18,000 last year. You can get 30,000 this year, but that...
Okay. Childcare fees do not cover the cost of the operation. So if a childcare center can hold, just for round numbers, let's say, well, an infant classroom can only hold 10 infants, period, and you charge $100 per child, okay? You have 10 children paying $100, whether that money comes from the state, the parent, or the city. But it costs, say, $2,000 to operate, to pay for the staff, the benefits, the food, the insurance, utilities, and all those things. So in the past, the city was helping us to cover the difference in the operating so that we could keep fees affordable, more reasonable. Childcare is not affordable. But now, we have no support, and our other funds that we were using to support childcare are drying up as well and have been cut substantially.
I didn't understand. Thank you.
Do you know how many, just, and again, I'm putting you on the spot here, do you know how many slots were cut? Or is that it?
We have not cut yet, because this has all just come about very quickly, but we have told the managers, or at least the manager at the one side right now, not to accept any more infants and toddlers at this point, and we were looking, I think we have seven infants and 11 toddlers right now, and we just had a long-term employee. Many of you remember Katie Parish. She just retired, and so it may, we may not refund, I mean, replace that position, and when the children allow us to, age-wise, to merge those classrooms, because infants and toddlers are the most expensive to care for.
My main reason for asking to explain that is just to obviously put that issue out, that it's an ongoing problem, and I don't know that the city, through CDBG, if we can look at something next year, and I know a committee looked at this, but with the state cut in funding, this cut in funding, it seems very difficult to continue maintaining what is a very necessary service for several people in our community, to allow them to work.
And I fully expect more childcare centers to close their door as an impact of the state subsidy cuts.
Okay. Thank you, Cheryl. And again, I apologize for putting you on the spot there.
So Cheryl, I don't know if this is for you, for Brent, I'm sorry, but just so I
understand, this 30,000 is pot of money to go to you all, but you have to have that many families to draw that money down before it goes to Cheryl?
My instructions to them were for them to develop a program with policies on how they would outline it, so it's their program to design.
Cheryl has to...
Cheryl. Cheryl and her staff, it's their program to design. They have a $30,000 commitment from the city, roughly, based on, since we don't have our actual funding yet. Now, they have to send me that policy so I can review it, because I still have to be accountable to the HUD regulations. So that's important to keep in mind. These are still HUD dollars that I have to make sure that we're accountable to. So as I review that, and then however they set it up, they could set it up as, you know, how many dollars a week, $100 a week, $100 a month, whatever that works out to be, and then take applications to help people fill that gap to help with their childcare. So there's still assistance being provided. I understand we're talking about the funding mechanism, pretty much direct or indirect cost on these organizations, but there's still the service being provided with these funds.
So she could set this program up where these vouchers cover the complete cost of caring for that child?
It's their program to design, but I still have to approve it, just to make sure that it follows the HUD rule.
Okay. So the example she gave where, you know, she had 1,000, but it's costing 2,000 to care for that child, she could set this program up for 2,000?
Without seeing it, I just can't say that it's acceptable or not.
But she could set it...
I have to look at the specifics of the program.
To cover all of her cost, if she chose to. Okay, thank you.
Brent, just to wear this out, just a little longer.
None problem.
Is this a, the way that you're doing it this year, is it due to a new regulation by HUD, or what made the decision, I guess, to do it?
Well, there's two parts. First of all, I originally did it under an area benefit, and now we're really getting into the details of federal regulation, so I'll try to keep this pretty straightforward. Did it under area benefit, so what we were saying was, these were in low-income areas, so we're benefiting the area. But now, I can't do that. There has to be a direct service, so that's a limited clientele benefit. So I have to be able to show who is benefiting from these funds. I need to be able to show that Ms. Smith at 11210 Street is benefiting from these funds, and Ms. Jones at 1412 Chestnut is benefiting from these funds. So that's why the change was made. It was brought up during the review. It was brought up, and we said, you know, would you be agreeable to a voucher-based program? Yeah. So we moved forward with it, made it part of the, it was part of the committee's recommendation to me. I take that recommendation, incorporate it into the action plan, present it to you all at the public hearing, and now we're here tonight to approve that action plan. So the details is for Community Action to work out the details, and I've been working with Tracy and Cheryl's staff on helping them kind of sort out some of those details, because it's easier to do that part now so that we can start in July, as opposed to waiting until July, and then trying to work out the details and putting us in additional couple months.
So the next time that this comes around, we'll have some history on how this is working, and maybe how it can work more effectively.
Yeah, by the time this comes around again, we'll have six, seven months in, because it'll come around, even unless we change the process, we're at the end of the consolidated plan, so we're going to rewrite the consolidated plan this year. So everything is open to change.
Again, I blindsided Cheryl, and I apologize. We hadn't talked about having this brought up, but the more I thought about it, the more I thought that it was important to bring it out publicly as far as what we're doing in case, obviously, we do have the cuts, and people may understand it better.
Understood. Anything else?
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2013-65.
Municipal Order Authorizing the Submission of a Grant Application to the U.S. Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance for the Purchase of Bulletproof vests for the Police Department in the amount of $11,340.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. DeFabo.
Our executive assistant, Jennifer Nash, has applied for a bulletproof vest grant. It cost us about $11,340. We received $11,340 in the grant to receive 27 new vests. They are recycled or changed on a five-year basis. Jennifer's here, if you have any questions.
You got to have a question from Ms. Jen. Thank you for coming. Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2013-66.
Municipal Order Approving Parks and Recreation Fees.
So moved.
Motion by Denny, second by Hill.
Approximately six years ago, city staff used to, within perceived discretion, change the park and rec fees. We changed that feeling that that responsibility should rightfully go with the commission in their role as caretakers of fees and revenues. Staff puts together every year a recommendation as to what fees for park and rec should be changed. Parking rec represents the great bulk of fees that the city has. It might be easier if J.B. Belcher would just come up and give an overview of his first recommendation as to fees and charges for the coming year.
Mr. Belcher.
Hello, thank you, everybody. Just a quick overview, we have 345 fees listed for you, and, or 300, we have 19 new fees, 14 are adjusted, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those. The new fees tend to, there's three major categories. It's the golf course, we have some new fees associated with that. 15 and under for a junior rate, we'd like to institute that to encourage play. Winter play for January and February months, once again, to basically encourage play on whatever warm weather days we may have for January and February. And then, the added is a partnership with the Foundry. We've added that. That fee is listed. And then, last but not least, under athletics, our sports and youth organization fees. And that is the bulk of our new fees. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them, but...
As Hill.
I'd like to thank you for doing such a great job on these fees and a nice report for us. Appreciate the new fees added. The only thing I would like to see changed is the junior fee at Crosswinds.
Yes.
From $11 to $13.
Right.
And that would make it half of the young adult fee.
And the young adult, just to make sure, that was our college fee, and just because everybody doesn't go to college, we thought we'd just term it a young adult fee now, so that's a different term that we're using this year, but that's where, that fee, $26 was a college fee, now termed a young adult, and if you got to so choose, the $13 would be for 15 and under.
Are you making that form of amendment?
Yes. Yes.
Motion to amend that fee from 11 to 13 to have second.
Second.
Second by Waltrip. I'll write that down, make sure I get it correct. Okay. Any discussion on that particular item for the amendment? Please call the roll on the amendment to raise the junior fee from 11 to $13.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Now, we're back to the original municipal order with the amended fee. Now, we're back to the original municipal order with the amended fee. Any other discussion or questions?
No, I only have one comment for Brent. The gardens at the foundry, thank you all so much. Staff really went out of their way to work with the folks at the foundry and put those garden plots in over there.
It was our pleasure.
I think this, again, is the first year of that, but I think that'll be even more successful as people get used to having some garden plots over there, similar to cariocas.
Right. You'll see they're a little smaller in size.
Right.
So that is a different fee structure for those, but there's 10 plots there, and just like you said, in the future, we know that some people are going to sign up from the West Side now because there'll be garden plots available, so...
It'll make transportation, obviously, not an issue with some, but again, you all, the people at the foundry were just very pleased at the city's response to that request, and very, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brent has a nice suit on also.
Yes.
Yeah.
Special occasion.
My love of money is, you know, he's...
He wasn't playing fair.
Any other discussion? Please call or roll on Municipal Order 2013-66 as an amendment.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Thank you, Brent. Appreciate it. Ordinance, first reading of ordinance 2013, number 10.
Ordinance amending Code of Ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter 22 Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Subchapter 22 to 11 Temporary Display of Motor Vehicles of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances to allow for an annual display and sale of antique, vintage, rare, and collectible motor vehicles at the National Corvette Museum.
So moved.
Second.
Sorry, motion by Williams, second by Hill. Mr. Williams.
I might just say, Mayor, that I think that this particular event is scheduled to be something that could grow into something very nice for our city and also boost our economy with the people visiting. It could end up being a signature event, one of those annual things that people make an effort to show up, and I commend the Tourism Commission and the Visitors Bureau in following up with this and getting us the information that they need. It's for an annual show and auction of rare, vintage, collectible, and antique vehicles, and I understand that the person doing it and setting this up already has some very, very nice vehicles scheduled to be on the block, so there's going to be a lot of people in here and interested in those, and I'm happy to sponsor this.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
Gentlemen back there.
I'm sorry, I'll take you any questions. I was going to be able to answer those. We do have 70 at this time.
70 vehicles coming in?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, 70 consigned vehicles.
And you are?
I'm Steve Stussy. I'm a apprentice under Steve Cherry at Progressive Auction Group here in Bowling Green, and I'm the regional director for Mr. Gerhard out of Pennsylvania Park and Auction.
I understand. The auction company that's handling the event. Appreciate you being here. Leslie is here from the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
I'm actually the one who deemed called at the Convention Bureau, and I convinced him to come look at our city. He actually was going to take this to Detroit, and I convinced him to come here with his wife on his way down to Florida for the winter. He went up to Corvette Museum, did a side visit of our city and our attractions, and was convinced he wanted to bring this to Bowling Green. So we should be thrilled to get this here and hopefully make this an annual event for our city and attractions and restaurants and hotels.
We look forward to filling up all the restaurants and hotels. We'll come back very often. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Leslie, for getting them to Bowling Green.
Any other discussion? Please call or roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.